On Monday, January 20th, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with the roll call, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Baradelli, here. Mr. Bickerson, there. Mr. Fogalina, here. This is DeKet.
Yeah.
This is Hill.
Here.
This is Johnson. Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
This is Yates?
Here.
All right, we would like to welcome the visitors. Visitors are welcome to address the board concerning agenda items at the time the board discusses the item. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We had a one executive session before this meeting. We have one addition to the agenda we're going to put up for approval, item Q. To read, approve the superintendent to secure a police officer from the Beaver Borough, excuse me, the Beaver Industry Borough Police Department to attend board work and voting sessions. So that's going to be item Q. That's not on there, it will be in the...
You repeated, I'm so sorry.
Sure. So item Q will read, approve the superintendent to secure a police officer from Beaver and Industry Borough Police Department to attend board work and voting sessions.
Oh, okay.
To have a police officer.
In case we get a little late.
That's it.
I get it.
All right, on to procedural actions, approval of minutes. Number one, December 16th, 2019 voting session, and number two, January 13th, 2020 special voting session. Do I have a motion?
Some, uh...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Peterson? Quick question. For the executive session, can you tell the public is the basis for why we were in executive session?
We were in executive session before here to discuss pending litigation. Item B invoices for approval, we're going to bundle these all together. Number one, general fund listed December 31st, 2019, $1,643,239.20. Number two, general fund list dated January 20th, 2020, $621,066.30. Number three, activities fund list dated December 31st, 2019, $1,773.31. Number four, activities fund list dated January 20th, 2020, $8,048.90. Number five, cafeteria fund list dated January 20th, 2020, $59,916.60. Do I have a motion?
Some, move. Second.
Ketchin Yates, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item C, treasurer's reports, December 2019, because we're in your packet, do I have a motion?
Some, move.
Second.
So Baradelli, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, on to presentations. Evan Linkheimer?
Linkheimer.
Linkheimer, Evan Linkheimer, and Sarah Matier.
Good evening. My name is Evan Linkheimer, and I'm the president of the Music Honor Society here at the high school.
And my name is Sarah Matier, and I am the secretary of the Trium Music Honor Society here.
We are here on behalf of the music department in Trium to tell you guys a little bit about what we do down in the music department, both in the community and in the school district. The Trium is a community-based organization that takes members from the band or a certain chorus, puts them together to go out and do stuff. Each year we accept new members on account of their academic, musical, and also service-based abilities. So each year we try to do a couple different service projects, like I said, in the community and in the school district. So far this year, we went up to Beaver Meadows for the day of service that high school did. The beat band and chorus went there, did some Christmas carols, and the orchestra went out to Rochester Manor. After that, we also went back up to Beaver Meadows. We did a conjunction with the Leo Club, which is like a community-based organization also. The Trium got a few groups together, we went and performed for them. The Leo Club went and worked with the residents, it sounds like crafts and stuff, just to give them a nice afternoon. Tomorrow we have our next like organization service-based thing going on, it's in conjunction with the Trium National Day of Service. Because Trium is a national organization, trying to cross the country, we're all going out and doing some type of service, like organization service project, just to spread like what the group is, and also just to spread music throughout the community. For us, tomorrow we're going to be working in the school, we're going to be cleaning up the music department, helping organize and stuff, just make sure that runs well for the rest of the year.
Also this year, we are doing a major fundraiser event, and what we're doing is we are partnering with the Hungry for Music charity organization, which is an organization based out of Washington DC. And their mission is to provide underprivileged children with the opportunity to express themselves for music. And we think this is a really cool opportunity, and so we are running a twofold mission. The first part of our mission is that we are going to be collecting used instruments from people in our community, in our school, in our churches, and anywhere else. We can like find people who would be willing to donate instruments, and we are going to send these instruments to the Hungry for Music Foundation, and they're going to be able to give them to students who otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to participate in music. And the second half of our mission is that we are selling these Hungry for Music bracelets, and all of the profit that we get from selling those bracelets will also be donated to the foundation. And they can use any of the money that we give them and that other organizations give them to also buy new instruments and sheet music and other things that will support music in the schools. And finally, to show our commitment to both music performance and expression, and how we believe it has helped us and how it can help others. We also hold recitals throughout the year. We held one in November, and we had over 15 soloists and small groups perform. It was a really cool experience, and a lot of brought a lot of people together and let us show our love of music. And we are also hoping to do another charity recital sometime in April, and all of the proceeds that we raise from that performance will also be donated to the Hungry for Music Foundation.
So thank you for hearing us speak tonight, we look forward to your continued support throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
How much are the bracelets?
They're a dollar each.
I would like to buy one for each of the board members, our solicitor and our business manager, so... Did I? I got there first.
I was just going to buy one for myself. Like I have some mature instruments at our house, like when does your thing end, or?
So we're starting it now and goes through the end of the school year. You can either bring it into the front office and put it there, we're working with them, we'll collect it, bring it down to the music department. Yeah, so whatever you're available, we'll bring this in.
Do you need a piano?
A piano? We'll talk to you about that, we'll figure out what you do with that.
We actually were really lucky to, I think it was two years ago, get a new grand piano. We joked that the only thing older than the grand piano, wow, never mind. Yeah, was Lou, but he retired. He authorized me to tell the joke, right? It's old now. But we do have a brand-new grand piano, so probably no on the piano, but we can certainly check into that. But we need to find a way to leverage all the parents out there who have an instrument in their basement from when their kids graduated and didn't pursue music.
Yeah, we're planning to expand outside the music department soon, go to the whole school, just to try to get some instruments in.
I like it.
Yeah, that was my question. Are you going to communicate within the district and outside of the district at some point to see what that reach looks like to get more?
Yeah, so right now, because we're just kind of starting out now, we're looking inside the music department, starting there. We're hoping within the next week or two, we're going to go outside the music department, make some announcements, put some stuff on the TV out there, just make sure that everybody knows. Because our greatest audience is going to be those people who quit the music department and have instruments just laying around, and hopefully get those back in and then give those people who really need them.
And we can try and get it on the district's Twitter feed.
Absolutely.
Those stores in Beaver.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, we'll look into doing that. Yeah, thank you.
So don't leave, all read fast, make sure you keep some bracelets. We only have item Q.
I'll have them for your, for the next meeting.
Okay.
So you guys can go if you'd like.
Before they leave, President Peterson, I would like to buy 161 for each member of ride transportation, all were staff members, so thank you.
I'd like to buy 170.
On that note, while we're doing presentations, Mr. Fry, do you want to just give the board a quick update? I know you had passed out some stuff to us for the Federal School Bus Safety Act.
Sure. In front of you, two weeks ago on Saturday, the 11th, for those new to the board, I sit on a few committees with the state on the state level. One that I'm most proud of is the legislative committee. And what's nice about that, it gets Beaver, it gets Western Beavers, Rochester, but it gets ride transportation a seat at that table there. One of our members in that committee, Blake Kraft, he's the president of the National School Bus Association, so we have a really big voice here in Pennsylvania. My goal today is just to kind of brief this, to start the educational process from my perspective to our school board in hopes that our school board can help educate other school boards and get it to PASBO, and then get it to your PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Board Association. The main, it's always a hot-button topic, is seat belts in school buses, so I don't think we have enough time for us to go back and forth. John and I, we've talked about this for many years. The state of Pennsylvania has been able to basically, there's no statistics that support any added safety when it comes to seat belts because of the compartmentalization, construction of the school bus, and how the bus really never hits that speed limit because it's stop and go, stop and go. And really, we don't put much, many miles on the bus on a daily basis. That doesn't speak for the buses that go on field trips and things like that, but if you can just think internal here in the district on a daily basis. So the problem we are faced with here, and it was just broke to us coming back from the holiday, was it's a companion bill in the senate, in the house, on the federal side. So right now Pennsylvania is on a state basis, has no voice in this whatsoever. This is a federal, two federal bills that are going to basically just trump everything. And the issue is when you're introducing...
Pun intended.
These two companion bills here, when it's, when a regulation such as what's listed in these PowerPoint that increases operational costs and causes it to be a pass-through charge to the contractor to the school district, it really is detrimental to a state like Pennsylvania. And we have other issues like Peasars, and we have, you know, the special education budgets, and charter school tuition, things like that. No pun intended, we love our charter schools as well.
That's very, very worthwhile.
But, so this is just to be talked about, we can go back and forth, but just to touch on it briefly. Any prime example why this is going to increase costs, Chairman Thomas and I, we've gone back and forth about this, they want to put seat belts, three-point harnesses in each school bus. Currently at Beaver, let's just take College Square for example, we have seven school buses. Every bus is filled to capacity. We may have one bus that is at 90% capacity at College Square. Everything's over capacity here in the high school, middle school, everything is certainly over capacity at Dutch Ridge. So when you're talking about adding three-point safety belts in each bus, we're losing 24 seats in each bus, because you go from a 72-passenger bus down to 24. Now, the bus is nine times more likely to catch on fire than to roll over in a side impact, okay? Now, granted, it's not likely to catch on fire at all, but what you're going to see in here, board, is the, there's five steps. The big shiny object is the school, is the safety belts. Then there's a lot of, there's a lot of jingle surrounded that for leverage for negotiation, okay? Now, you're going to see some safety, I mean, they're literally calling for fire suppression systems put in school buses. So a lot of these things are, again, they're just leverage for negotiation, firewalls, interior flammable smoke, emission seats that don't currently even exist. So in a nutshell, you can read through this, when we get together as a transportation committee, we can go in further depth with this. However, it's, this is a runaway trend currently right now, and we like to get this to be, at best, a state decision. Let's keep this as a state decision, because this impacts a state like Pennsylvania way more than it would another, another state at this current time. And if you're talking about, does it increase safety? Currently, all statistics say no, because you have one adult in the school bus, and if you're going to have 48 students in seat belts in that bus, there's an accident, we can't get those students out very quickly. Furthermore, the seat belts turn into weapons also. And it's also going to cause us to put additional adults on the vehicles to help make sure these students are in their safety belts. And furthermore, we all hate on Tusker Horse Road or Dutch Ridge, getting behind a school bus, making stop after stop after stop. It's going to increase a lot of time making sure everyone gets in, and it's going to be detrimental to us trying to make these loops. If we're use bus A at the high school to drop kids off, we have to be offloaded and back into Dutch Ridge with the same bus to pick up the Dutch. So if we're increasing our times any more than seven to 10 minutes, we're going to have a lot more equipment on the road. And I don't want to see it, and as a taxpayer, I don't want to see it, and as a school district, we don't want to see it at all. So again, today is just a briefing, we can go in more detail, but again, we, our goal here as a team is to make this as a state choice regulation.
Mr. Fry, when is this up for debate or vote or whatever through the federal document? Is this something that's going down?
So you're going to see on page four, it's not the last page, but page four of the PowerPoint, it talks about Duckworth, Senator Duckworth is the most notable and ranking member of the Transportation City Subcommittee. As a ranking member, she has the ability to see all of this if she wants to go through. So right now, it is, right now in both the senate, or it's been passed through the house, and it's sitting at the senate right now. And they control the house, it went right through there, right now, and she does have the votes, from what we understand, in the senate, for this to go.
So that could be put up for a vote any, anytime, and that could get passed?
I think everything is really stalled as we speak right now, but I know this is something that she, this is one thing that she wants to see through.
Where does the, your national association sit on this? They stand on, you're on, you guys are aligned, you're aligned with them and what they're trying to do?
Well, the reason why I think everyone's aligned really quick is because right now you have 11 states that have seat belts. Two of them are actually going to reverse the mandate. However, being an election year, that really, nobody wants to put pen to paper and reverse that, because it truly is a debatable safety item. And nobody really wants, you know, to, there's two sides of the coin when it comes to this. But truly, there's no statistics that really support an increase in safety because of the construction of the vehicle, but more importantly, you have a lot of vulnerability and exposure with these students in the seats, with one adult trying to get them all out. But more importantly, with bullying being the worst it's ever been, these seat belts, are they truly going to be in them, or are they going to start using them to tie each other up in them too? So there's a lot of things that aren't, this is a prime example of trying to get something put through without being properly educated on the matter. Again...
Who's pushing it from the other side, besides Duckworth? I mean, who's her line?
I really don't have those names. We were briefed Saturday on it, we didn't go much into it. We do have a meet with the, with the politicians on March 17th. Harrisburg will be there, and a lot of our local people will be there as well. This was so new, coming out of the holiday break, that all we were told was, this is full steam ahead. And really, we don't have much of a voice, because they removed it from the state, this is a federal.
Related to this, we receive a transportation subsidy from the state, which hasn't been increased in years, the pot of money. As a result, when DJ improves our utilization, and we get more money through the subsidy, we actually run out faster. That is, they only allot so much money, and those people that improve their utilization take more money out of the pot. Everybody else runs out of money faster, and our receivable increases every year. So they pay us next year for this year's money that we earned. And it keeps getting worse, and they just keep kicking the can down the road. So it's, this is going to be another error.
And to, just to touch on that, we can educate on that subsidy, John, and we take great pride in that. Pupil transportation is subsidized service here in PA, which thank goodness they didn't do away with that six years ago when it was up for debate. The issue is, the formula that we receive money back on has not been updated since 1974. That's 1974 operational cost. Now, the CPI number that goes in it is a true indicator of cost of living, but it's no different than having a rusted car body and putting a brand-new motor in it. It's not going to get you anywhere, anywhere fast. So that's the issue. If they're going to, they're going to increase the cost of operation and the price of a new bus by $25,000, our operational cost is going to go up, but it's the formula and what we receive subsidized dollars back, it's, it's actually, the deficit is going to be much greater in percentage. So it's not going to increase any money for us, it's only going to cost us more money. It's a really, it's a really big deal, and that's the reason why I just wanted to, just to bring it out on the table right now. I know as a team, we're, you know, we can go into more detail and get everybody on the same page, but basically, state of Pennsylvania on both sides have basically been anti-seat belts, and this is one of the biggest reasons, because the statistics certainly do not support any increase in safety. Kind of goes the other way, if not breaks even, but it's certainly a huge increase in operational cost. 88% of school districts operate under a contractor, and that's only going to increase the next couple of years because of operational cost and Peasars contribution. So this is, this is going to be tough, definitely.
Wow. Well, please keep us updated. On a later note, JROTC.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, Major Weaver. Just want to recap everything that's been going on here. December, we had the marksmanship board, Eduware Marksmanship Competition in Seneca Valley, we didn't win. We did not retain the championship, but we get it next year. January's been kind of hot and heavy, we've been pretty much preparing for our, we have an inspection every three years for the program, and we've been prepping for that. So a lot of our time has been focused on that. We have a, the first part of that inspection is this Thursday with the color guard and the, and the drill team. So we should pass up flying colors, then the actual inspection will be in February. I don't see any issues with that, so I'm not, I'm going to hold off on that piece there. We did the cadet leaderboard just a couple, last week, we had, for the cadet, there was, the winner was, oh my goodness, drawing a blank. The leader was Cadet Tuchaner, Staff Sergeant Tuchaner, she had won the leaderboard, and the cadet winner was, I don't have a grid down here, going to kill myself here. No, she won the leaderboard. It'll come to me.
Well, if you, if you send it to me, I'll make sure that the board hears it.
Before I'm done here. Daleen Sykes. Daleen Sykes, he won the cadet board. So they both did very well. All of the cadet, all of the candidates presented themselves well, there's promotions involved with that, and they compete at the end of the year for the cadet and leader of the year board. We have the, the raider, raider competition is coming up soon, it's going to be March 14th, and we have the drill competition coming up February 22nd. So it's two days after our inspection, we roll right into the drill competition here. So all of our time, again, is just pretty much locked into what's going on with the inspection. We, we don't retain the honor, you know, with distinction, then we lose some bargaining power when it comes to military academies, kind of being able to write letters of recommendation directly for students, so... But I don't see any issues going on there. I think we'll be just fine. I think that's all I got right now, before I rack my brains.
Well, good luck with all the upcoming things, and keep up the excellent work. No other presentation?
No.
All right, on to new business. Item A, approve the SSM Industries contract abiding by the terms and conditions of Co-Stars Contract 008-420 for the winter/spring 2020 renovations, as described in section 2.3.2 of the contract, and currently priced at $714,000 and subject to final legal review. Do I have a motion?
Some, move.
Second?
Second.
So the contract that you have online that you're looking at is an AIA contract, it's a very standard contract that we've used before. We make edits to it to mention the Co-Stars, to provide in the Co-Stars, and just to change the scope of work and the price. If you remember, for Phase 1B, you had approved going up to 2 million. SSM is 714,000 of that. We may not get, need to use the full 2 million, will be somewhere between an additional 550,000 and 1.2 million. But this is SSM's portion, and it'll be subject to legal review. I sent, I just got this today, we sent it on to Janet, and I also copied their contract expert on it. So that's where we are.
Questions? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item B?
Were we supposed to make a motion on what I wanted to add first?
No, it's, we're going to do that as Q, after B.
I thought we had to approve adding it to the agenda.
Nope, we added it on, the announcement adds it on, and then we'll vote on it for Q.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no, you're good.
Make sure I understand.
Item B, approve additional renovation work to be done between June 2020 and September 2020, Phase 2A, in an amount not to exceed $3 million, and to be completed under existing Co-Stars agreements that were put in place for Phase 1A renovation work with SSM Industries and YESCO.
Some, move. Second.
So this is, just so we can, your approval allows to do some preliminary work that has ordered along with time equipment. You will probably be seeing in February another contract coming up with SSM for that summer work. So we just keep doing this piecemeal, doing what we can to not interrupt classes during the school year, and then hitting it as hard and as fast as possible in the summer months.
And just for what it's worth, because these are some big numbers that we're putting out there, for people that want to know kind of what this is being used for, building envelopes, HVAC, so heating and cooling, lighting, electrical improvements, not related to lighting, new roofs in different buildings, groundwater and drainage systems. So it's nothing new and fancy, it's not a new, you know, wing or a new part of a building, it's really just to make, make necessary updates and improvements to our existing infrastructure here. In case anyone's wondering what that number's being used for.
And most of those projects do save energy.
Any other discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item C, reject all bids for the repair of the existing aluminum pool and authorize the administration to proceed with the design, specifications, and subsequent bidding of a new gunite pool in its place.
Some, move.
Second.
John, you want to go?
Yeah, so concurrent with all the bidding that we've been doing, we've been doing additional research, and what we've got is an infrastructure around the pool that's 52 years old and has never been touched, and we're about to change out the liner and the gutters. There is no architect out there that will support that. All of them basically say aluminum pools at that age should be replaced with a gunite pool. So I explained the risks to the board, that for all we know, could last another 10 or 20 years if we make those changes. But nobody will guarantee that, and the aluminum infrastructure is 52 years old, and there have been leaks of chlorinated water. And we're not quite sure exactly where they went, where that water went. It could have damaged the aluminum infrastructure, we don't know. More importantly, to tear the gravel out that surrounds it to try and get to it and look at it is extremely difficult. There's only a couple areas where we could do that, to get a feel for how it looks. So just putting it out there for the board to talk it over and decide what they want to do, I have no vested interest in either option here. I just want you to make the best decision possible and know what the risks are. So questions, feel free.
So the gunite pool is going to, potentially, a new gunite pool would cost more initially than repairing the existing aluminum infrastructure.
So let's summarize that. So existing repairs would be somewhere between $400,000 and $700,000. To go with gunite would be somewhere between $800,000 and 1.2 million. The difference between the two is with gunite, you're assured that there is not going to be a failure of the infrastructure. With the repair of the aluminum pool, you don't... infrastructure. With the repair of the aluminum pool, you don't know that.
I think it's important to note that in our discussions, we felt it was better to fix it all the way than to fix it and then not know what might happen. You need to get a new pool.
Essentially, not the whole building, but the actual pool.
What we're actually voting on is accepting a different kind of deal. So we're not voting on
We need to know what that is going to cost us. It'd be such a risk for us to go down the aluminum side, right? And do the things that we've been looking at doing and then have this in the back of our heads knowing that our investment could fail. It could fail if they're putting that on and those support structures are compromised. We gotta see what that other option is. We have to, in my opinion.
As far as the design specifications, the only thing that's changing is really the liner portion. I mean, the gutter is gonna stay the same, correct? It's really just a matter of digging out where it needs to be dug, reinforcing with the proper rebar. But piping, everything that was in the initial bid package should be the same with the exception of the added work that might be necessary to construct a gunite well.
So I had a conversation just today with a company that specializes in water parks and pools. And he, he literally only had like 30 minutes to think about it and he called me back and he basically said, I think it's realistic to, to, to do it, to put it in and not have to rip the entire infrastructure out. Just do it in place. You may lose one lane. He'd be coming in on the sides, but not on the length. But that's up to them. I mean, the next step in this process is we would have to find quickly and decide on a designer and contract with them. His fee is about $50,000 to do the design and he can do it a month and a half. With that kind of speed, which is very unusual, most architectural and engineering firms don't operate that fast. We could possibly have the bids finished and get on somebody's schedule for the summer. We will have many more people bidding, we expect, for, to do a gunite pool than repair an aluminum. We only had two out of the 37 companies that requested information for the repairs, two bidders. But gunite, all, everything I'm hearing from the architects, there are plenty of firms that know how to do that.
And part of the reason why this is coming up now as opposed to before this was, correct me if I'm wrong here, John, when we received our bids back for the work on the aluminum pool and we started digging through a lot of the work that the bidders wanted to do to meet our specifications, it kind of started raising some red flags on whether or not it even made sense to, to stick with the aluminum pool route. Is that a fair statement?
There was an enormous difference between the two bids and we were trying to figure out why there was such a 250 to 300,000 dollar disparity. And everything kept leading to the risk associated with, with doing this.
Do we have a schedule of deliverables in terms of, I mean, we're essentially rebid, I mean, we're redesigning the pool portion?
That would be what the designer would deliver in a month and a half.
So they design, they would do the design specifications in a month and a half?
Deliver the bid package.
And then the bid package would go out?
So we could begin advertising while they're working on the design so that when the advertisement schedule is finished, we could release the specifications and then let them bid.
Okay. Still time, provided you get it on the schedule?
It's possible. It, it's tight, but it is doable.
Okay.
So John, the, so, and I don't know a lot of the history of, of the first design we went through for the aluminum. We paid a designer X amount of money to put that together. So now we're gonna have to go back now, commit. You're saying 50,000 more dollars upfront just to have them put this together for us without even knowing if we're gonna move forward?
No, we didn't pay anything for the first specification. We, we created that. We kind of looked around at other schools that had done it, took parts of their bids, added it to ours. So it certainly was not as tight a specification as you would get from an engineering firm, but it was good enough to try and get numbers to see if we could repair this thing.
But you're saying now for this new option, we would have to spend that much?
You, you have, yeah, you have to. If you're, if you're redesigning a whole pool and specifying the gunite and the rebar and the dimensions and the excavation piping. So yeah, we, we would need that.
So let him see, we've proven that money right now, you're saying? Or not? No?
No, this is just to authorize us to go forward and go find somebody. You may get a notice from, from me to say, look, I need a, an emergency meeting to approve contract with the designer. We'll be meeting on Friday. There'll be a large group of us meeting, including SSM that has helped us out through the major renovations, other contractors that have done gunite and a couple of architects. And we're gonna walk them through the pool, talk about it and see what their feeling is.
But they're just preliminarily telling you it's gonna be around 50,000 dollars to put this together just to put this design?
That's pretty standard. Standard is about 5% of the total project cost for engineering and architects. So he's taking 5% of the million. He knows it's somewhere between 800,000 and 1.2 million. So he split the difference and said 50,000.
Any other questions, concerns?
Less the amount the boosters have already raised.
There you go.
And the foundation is already put in, so.
And how much is that?
260, it'll be 260,000. Pretty serious group.
You put into the pool already?
No, no.
No, no, they've raised. They've raised.
No, but we.
We've put money. We've bought in the scoreboard. That was 16,000 dollars. We've, you know, we have equipment that we're constantly diving for. We just bought the diving board, yeah.
So Pete, just sell wristbands at 10 dollars a pop and call Frye?
I said the boosters will just cover everybody in the room.
So any other questions on item C? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item D, approve the new natural gas contract for the middle high school with UGI Energy Services for $2.37 per decatherm with the term running from February 2020 through August 2022.
Second.
So you probably, if you looked at this gen item last week, you probably saw a blank for the price. It did not change. They had the option to change it based on where the market landed today since they were trading today. But we're good. No changes to the price.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, approve the Valuation Engineers, Inc. appraisal agreement with Part 1 initial appraisal priced at 5,250, the Part 2A annual revaluation priced at 525 per year for five years, beginning with the delivery of the Part 1 initial appraisal, the Part 3 fixed asset management system priced at $0, and the Part 4 annual accounting supplement priced at 525 dollars per year for five years, beginning with the delivery of the Part 1 initial appraisal. Second?
Second.
So this, yeah, this is just something that we have to do to keep up with our insurance to make sure that we're insured for the right replacement cost.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item F, approve the Willows contract for the Beaver Area High School prom on May 1st, 2020, requiring a down payment of $1,000 by February 1st with assigned contract and with food and beverage costs currently estimated at 15,000 plus a 20% service fee.
Second.
Also discussed last week. We got everything squared away with contract. I know there was a question on liability or indemnity.
We're good.
All right, excellent. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Real quick, Scott, is this, and I know this is not a big deal, but is this something that like a, like the student body chose to change to the Willows or is this the administration saying we're moving? Is this like a consensus from them or how does that?
Oh, no. This is, this is student lib.
Student lib?
This is student lib.
So they want to go?
$15,000 and 20% service fee. They've selected this.
And?
We could give them the gym.
Yeah. There is, there are separate accounts maintained by different class groups by year and for different athletic groups where they raise money for certain things. So ultimately, some of this the district pays for and some of it is fundraised by the students. All right, any other questions?
President, no, I'm not staying for this one.
Okay. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and one abstention. I'll just make sure John has that for you. All right, we're gonna bundle G, H, and I. Item G, adopt revised board policy number 622, G A S B Statement 34, first reading. Item H, adopt revised board policy number 138, language instruction educational program for English learners, first reading. And item I, adopt new board policy number 142 migrant students, first reading.
I think I'll ask John to speak to the, to policy 622.
All policy 622 is, is our, our capitalization policy. It's how a company, any, every company has one of these. It decides at what point they depreciate a capital asset. Those are assets that have an estimated life of one year or longer. In our case, it used to be 1,500, which was really kind of crazy. You ended up trying to capture a lot of data that we really didn't need, feeding it to valuation engineers. So we raised the limit to 50,000. I did the test to prove that we still capture 80% of the assets that we need to and we're good. Questions?
5,000.
5,000.
You said 50.
We, we went from 15 to 5,000. Sorry. 1,500 to 5,000.
Okay, then we have policy 138. This one deals with language instruction and education program for English learners and policy 142, which is about migrant students. And I would say that both of these policies really deal with issues of equity, ensuring that we meet the needs of these two unique populations. So if you were to look at policy 138, it talks about when a student presents for enrollment, ensuring that there is an evaluation of that student's needs, making sure that we have curriculum that's appropriate for those students and certified teachers, which is no easy thing to do. We oftentimes work with the intermediate unit because we need several ESL teachers in order to meet our population's needs. So we have 10 to 15 students at any given time with multiple different languages. This policy also talks about the ability to exit from the program. Some schools, and we're thankfully not one of them, will opt to keep students for as long as possible in a, kind of an isolated program. And our goal is to get them to proficiency as quickly as possible and to support them in the regular program. And then this policy also talks about our obligation to track them for two years to make sure that we didn't prematurely exit them or to make sure that they don't need any additional supports. Finally, the policy talks about parent engagement and doing that in the target language or the language that the, that the student and the parent prefer, which can be challenging at times, but we've been able to, to do. Policy 142, we have added, well, it's an entirely new policy, but when we talked about it at the work session, realized that we did not put in a definition. There are a couple of definitions that were added. One is that a migratory child is one who works or whose parents work in the agriculture, dairy, or fishing industry and who has made a qualifying move in search for work within the previous 36 months, which begs the question, what is a qualifying move? Glad you asked. A qualifying move is defined as moving from one school district to another in order to engage in or to accompany or join a parent, spouse, or guardian who engages in temporary or seasonal employment in the agricultural, dairy, or fishing industries. That is, that's true. It is very specific to those industries and we're taking these definitions from Title 1. This, this policy really talks about equitable access, again, making sure that we're meeting the child's education, educational, social, and emotional needs, meeting them in their target language if there's a need and making sure that we're not forcing them because of their, that their native language isn't English into taking a curriculum that doesn't meet their ability level. For examples, just because somebody doesn't speak English does not mean that they should be in special education services because we can provide the extra support there. So that would seem to make sense, but that is, our policy is, is saying that we won't do that. And also, a student may be gifted and we need to be sure that we're assessing that as well and giving them access to our gifted curriculum if they need that, even if their target language isn't English or if they're a migrant student.
And for our newer members, just so you know, we do multiple readings of board policies before we make adjustments or add or remove policies. So this is just the first reading for these. We'll see them again next month, so.
You have a question on these policies?
Not these policies.
Oh, okay. So we bundled items G, H, and I. We had a motion by Mrs. DeKetch, second by Mrs. Yates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We're, yeah.
Well, what is our, I'm sure you have a running rhythm of what policies, because I'm new, I need to still get my head wrapped around. We need a lot of updates to policies.
Right now, we're marching through our 100. We did all the zeros, which is the way the, the board is organized. Now we're marching through the 100s. I would like to avoid doing the 200s, which are related to students until we get to the summer. I, I don't want to change, I'll answer that. I don't want to change the rules partway through unless there's a compelling reason to do so for the students. So we'll hit the 200s really in the, in the summer. And then we're condensing a couple of other areas that our solicitor and PSBA is, are walking us through. So we're doing this because a lot of our policies, if you look at them online, they're all available there, are from 1995. A lot has changed. If you think just about technology, so much has changed in technology since then. To have a policy, and we don't, but to have had a policy from 1995 in the 2000s is just irresponsible and it opens you up to a lot of different liability. Another reason that we might do a policy, for example, I, I said we're going through the 100s, but we just did a 600 and that's when we have a compliance issue. So a lot of times we'll find out for our financial reasons or for Title 1 compliance or things like this, that a policy needs to be updated.
So for the board's sake, and I'll speak for myself, is there something we're working off of or is it just, hey, I should probably take the time to look through all of our policies and then what's the consensus that, hey, this one needs updated? I know we're using PS?
PSBA.
PSBA has some guidance?
They do have guidance. We are, so as far as the order, we're going through the, through the 100s. So.
So we're 142, I see. So then we're just gonna look at 143 or 145. Oh, I'm sorry, 143. Does it need change?
Right. One of the, one of the reasons why it's good to work with both our solicitor and PSBA for this is they can oftentimes suggest a language that is beneficial, but if we're not using them, then we might not realize, for example, this not using them, then we might not realize, for example, this migratory student policy, we didn't have that. It wouldn't have necessarily occurred to us to have this policy, but because we worked with PSBA and our solicitor, we know that we need this. So I think there's twofold approach to this.
PSBA actually has some type of online management system that kind of.
It's called Board Docs.
Board Docs, there you go. That helps us manage everything on our end to make sure it's always available, but also, like Dr. Rowe said, hey, based on laws that have changed, everybody should be looking at the policy regarding whatever, and then we go from there.
Can I add though, Luke, the question you asked also, because you govern, who do these policies? Yes, you should review them as well.
Yeah. My question really is, are we, do we, does the board become aware of policies that were skipped over because maybe they're already compliant, they're applicable, they're up to date, there are no change needed?
We will, no, we will do every single policy in the 100s so that at a minimum the date changes, that the board has reviewed the policy.
Okay.
And it will go from 1995.
So if it's the same, I'm, perfect. But Aaron, to your point, you're right. Absolutely. Thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Staring.
Oh, the question was, how many policies are there? Several hundred.
A lot.
And I, I don't know that I can, I can come back with a better answer at our next work session for everyone, but we're going to need to do them faster than two per meeting. Since you're a new board, I would like to ease you into this, but eventually we're going to need to do five or more each time so that there would be five where there's a new reading and five where there's a second reading. And then as five fade off, five new ones would come on. Otherwise, we're never going to get through this.
Right.
Right, precisely.
Is it the intent of this board and your guidance with this review to be done by 2020 or before the next school year?
I think that this is going to go into, into next school year, for sure. We can, we can up the pace to whatever the board would like.
I think five is.
Come on.
A lot.
When you're reading and you're tracking the changes between the two, because you want to know, what did our old policy say and what are, what are you actually changing? So that's why we do this strike through. It becomes a, quite a time-consuming process, not only for my office to, to execute and give to you, but also for you to take the time to read.
Yep, I got you.
So by the time we're done, we'll just start again with zero. All right, let's bundle items J and K together. Item J, employ Jason Bublas as boys varsity basketball assistant coach, effective December 5th, 2019. Remuneration $2,630 for the 2019-2020 winter sports season. And item K, approve stipend adjustment of additional $670.69 for Heidi Burke, girls varsity basketball assistant coach for the 2019-2020 winter sports season. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Item J is standard business. Item K, again, deals with an issue of equity. This is our attempts at realigning our pay for Title IX compliance and because it's just the right thing to do.
Yes.
Any questions, Ms. Hearn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to see somebody opposed that way. All right. Letter L, approve change to the high school course registration book for the 2020-2021 school year to include the following new course, app development with SWIFT.
Second.
This is one of those courses that I'm really excited that we can offer. Currently, the teacher that we have slated to teach this is Jason Hank, who is a Spanish teacher and also a tech coach, so he is able to offer this. Basically, it's going to allow students to use SWIFT and Xcode to create their own apps with guidance, apps that would actually be in the App Store. We have been working at having an articulated technology curriculum so that kids are exposed to coding and, and different technologies in elementary school. And when they get to seventh grade, it's the first time where we say every student as part of their rotation must take a coding course. It is approximately six weeks long, and that's SWIFT I. And then we have SWIFT II as an elective in eighth grade. So everybody gets a taste of it in seventh grade, and then you can choose whether or not you want to do that in eighth grade. And then any year above eighth grade, you can take this new course where you will take what you've learned previously and also, and apply it to designing your own app. What I like best about this class is because of who the teacher is, we are, and by that I mean because of his instructional excellence and his attention to detail and his penchant for, for equity, he really was able to help us say that if a student, for example, comes to us from Midland, meaning they're starting in ninth grade, and they didn't have the opportunity to take SWIFT I or SWIFT II, well, then they would be excluded from that class, and we don't want that. Whether it's coming to us from Midland or they're coming to us from St. Peter and Paul or they're just moving in, we have a lot of students moving in these days. We want them to be able to have access to the full curriculum. So Mr. Hank is willing to make room for all levels of learners. So I couldn't be happier to offer this. And then I'll just let you know as part of that articulated curriculum, the next step that we'd like to offer is an AP coding or AP computer science for the 21-22 school year. So we're adding this one for next year and then the AP course the following year. That's the hope.
And the curriculum for this is an Apple-based, what's the word, open source?
It is open source, so there's no cost for a book. Since it's an open educational resource, it's free to us, and whenever Apple makes a change, it just gets pushed out to all the teachers and the students. And this is really the way we want to go with the majority of our curriculum is to have these open educational resources. We have iPads for all the students. This is the way to go as far as texts are concerned. Certainly, if a student needs a print text, we can have that. Otherwise, let's use the iPad for this purpose as well.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor of letter L?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Letter M, approve request for overnight field trip for 45 students from the high school concert marching bands and four adults to perform at Hershey Park and attend a dinner theater production in Lancaster on May 15th and 16th, 2020. Cost for this trip is paid by the students and parents.
Second.
The, the agenda item really says a lot, says, says it all. We'll be sending a school nurse so that any student who has a medication need or a problem will be able to attend as well. That's again, part of our desire to provide that equity and access.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to bundle N and O. Approve list of substitute teachers for the 2019-2020 school year pending receipt of required clearances or background checks and approve additions to the list of district volunteers.
Second.
This is standard business, and I remain grateful to both groups, but in particular to the volunteers who come in and give, give their time selflessly.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item P, approve additions to the list of van, van, approve additions to the list of bus and van drivers from Frye Transportation. Up-to-date clearances and background checks are on file in the business office.
Second.
All right. Standard business. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item Q, approve the superintendent to secure a police officer from Beaver Industry Borough Police Department to attend board work and voting sessions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Luke, did you want to talk about it?
I just thought it would be smart for us to ensure that, you know, we have the opportunity to feel secure during these meetings. These are public meetings, people are allowed to come in and attend, and, you know, crazy times, so just want to make sure that everyone is safe and that if, God forbid, something happens, we have the means to be able to respond accordingly. A police officer is the best way to do that, so.
Is there a cost associated potentially with this?
I would anticipate that the cost would be approximately $70 to $80 per hour, and I would assume that we would be asking a police officer for two hours for the, for the attendance. So we're looking at $140 to $160 per meeting.
So our first, this is our first school safety decision. I'd much rather discuss something involving the students, the safety of the students and not the board's safety and using police resources as well, which seems pretty unnecessary.
I don't think it seems unnecessary, but I, I would rather, I agree with you, I'd rather spend the money over at the high school to protect the high school students.
And my concern is the children's safety. An elementary that has no, yeah, security.
I think we could walk and chew gum at the same time. There are conversations that are being had in order to continue to enhance being on the committee. We have a meeting coming up and there's more conversations happening on things that we want to do to enhance the safety of all the buildings. So more information to come, but I think this is, this is, I agree, Wendy, it's not that we can't spend the money towards a building or this or that. It's walking and chewing gum. When we're looking to secure additional security measures, you know, for 180 days at a building or whatever it might be, if it's retrofitting, changes, or it could be a lot of different things to enhance the safety, it's a lot more conversation, making sure we're doing it right, we're not missing anything. I'm sure there's different, you know, laws that we have to make sure we're obeying. It's just, there's more to discuss and more to think about. This, it's just easy and it's a no-brainer, in my opinion. It's just easy and a no-brainer.
Perhaps.
And it's not just our protection, it's for the protection of the public as well.
Can I say something? I've been coming for two years, two years, almost every month, and I have never felt unsafe at a school board meeting.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
To warrant a police officer.
I need to tell me I'm a dork. But I've never felt unsafe.
Maybe we have egress here, and I do respect and understand your, your position. Maybe I'm from a, I'm 48, so maybe I'm from a, you know, a different time and, you know, for me, I just feel very secure. I don't feel insecure, and I'd rather put that money towards keeping kids safe rather than me.
Throw the groceries.
So I know, Scott, you know, I was on Beaver Borough Council, I know their, their officers are paid by the borough, obviously, and they're taxpayers, but we did have a police officer at all those meetings. I mean, it was standard protocol. He sat there, you know, at, at all of our work session and general meetings. So I know it is standard protocol to have something like that, and that, so, and I think, Dr. Rowe, I don't know, last time you had a discussion with Chief Maguire, but I mean, I'm sure that, that cost, I know he's always willing to work with the district and vice versa, so I would wonder if we can maybe lean on him to, to be a little more aggressive with what he would or what the borough would charge us for something like that and maybe report back to, to the board, see, you know, have a new conversation with him and see if he'd be willing to cut us a special deal or something. But, you know, I'm in favor with Luke. I think it's just something that can be a good thing to have. It's a good thing that everyone feels safe and secure. It's probably a lot of the reasons why we move to a community or a district like Beaver. Our communities are safe, constantly ranking high on safety in the, in the state.
Okay.
It doesn't mean the bad stuff isn't going to happen, and there's a lot of instances that we can look back on and say, I'm sure those people felt the exact same way. I would, I would, it would be very hard to have to look at anyone in here or anyone on the board, God forbid, something were to happen. We can all have that same feeling, and that's a good thing. But there's no reason why we cannot be, take the safety measure to do that and continue to look at what we're trying to do to enhance security within the district.
I, I think the concern of this, the board right here is that while, yes, like the safety for these people are important, they need to look at the safety of the other schools first. Like right now, we have a school resource officer, which is great, but I don't believe that there's an officer at College Square at Dutch Ridge. So before, like, you know, $60 or $70 per session, that's going to add up over the entire year. So before, like, you look at that and spend money on that, it's about looking and spending money on an officer at those other schools first. That, I think that's what the board is trying to say.
Very good point. I, we all appreciate what you're saying and the board and the safety committee, and that's why I said we could walk and chew gum at the same time. We're doing that. We're doing that.
But the optics will.
I get it.
If it's. Think about how it looks. It looks like.
I get it.
Pick ourselves first and we'll remember the else in there. I, I, that's not my feel, you know?
But you know, but everyone on this board knows that that's not the, the case. I mean, there's.
Ultimately, we have a couple of choices. So we can approve this tonight, we can reject this tonight, we could table it and institute this at a later point in time, or if you, if it's rejected tonight, it can be brought back up at a later point in time. So if the consensus of the board is they want to, they're okay with a measure like this, but they're, they want to put other measures first, we can either table or reject it and bring this back up later, or we can.
Scott, is the motion to have her engage in a conversation with him or just to move forward and get it secured and have a guy here?
So as I read it, item Q's read to approve the superintendent to secure a police officer, so meaning to go get one.
So to move forward with whatever the cost is, that's not even going to be, we don't really know that 100% what the exact cost is.
That's true, you don't.
So can we change it? I don't know if we could, to just direct her to report back to us on what that would entail.
I mean, one of the easiest things to do would be to make a motion to table it, approve to table it and just.
Can I just make a motion to withdraw and then let's have more conversation?
Or we could have it withdrawn and then just ask Dr. Rowe to get, to have more information. We can do that as well.
So you would like to know how much it costs?
Have the conversation better. So I make the motion to withdraw my motion.
Do we second the withdrawal?
Okay.
Okay. Do we need a second to withdraw?
Second.
There we go. All those in favor of withdrawing the motion?
Aye.
Opposed to withdrawing?
It's the first one for us.
Yeah, I don't know.
Are we sure?
I think it's 10 years now.
Janet, are you sure?
Yeah, sure. I don't want to tell anyone. Because you need to vote on it first. That's the thing.
All right. So we're withdrawing Q, so we will move to item six, which is correspondence. Scott?
No.
No correspondence. Item seven is the administrative reports, which were in your packet and now attached for public viewing. Before we get to comments from visitors real quick, I just wanted to let anybody know who is in the public who may not have known this. Dutch Ridge Elementary earned a school-wide positive behavior and intervention support tier one accolades for sustaining with fidelity. That's a lot of things, but I'll let Dr. Rowe explain in a minute. And we also, College Square earned accolades for school-wide positive behavior and intervention support for tiers one, two, and three. So do you want to tell everyone what that means?
Sure.
It sounded really awesome, and there's more explanation, but I won't do it any justice, so.
Right. So we have school-wide positive behavior and instructional support, that's SWPIS. We have all kinds of acronyms. And basically, it says that, this accolade says that after a site visit and reviewing the rubric for all of the things that we're supposed to have in place, expectations for teachers and students, we were able to demonstrate with 90% or better that we are implementing this system with fidelity. It's not that College Square is, is doing that much better than Dutch Ridge, it's just that College Square started the process a little bit earlier than Dutch Ridge did. Dutch Ridge has also, you know, received the National Blue Ribbon Award. So those are the basics.
It was, we had a whole in-depth explanation on professional development, how the staff and faculty are. and faculty are engaged, how they handle things, how they're all, it's really a constantly improving thing, just with the way that society changes and how our little ones change and adapt, us needing to make the changes and adaptations as well. So our schools are doing a great job. Anywho, John, comments from visitors?
There's actually one more thing. Mrs. Sugar had some news about the Martin Luther King Jr. speech contest.
Okay, so we're so happy for the Dr. Kans, who will be speaking at Bushfield for over 20 years, our students have competed in the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration or Tour Contest, and they've won first and second. And this past year, Jeffrey Allison and Sophia Hahn won first place for both. So we just want to make sure that you know that, you know, your students are doing so well. Writing essays and also speaking, as is evidenced with Evan and Sarah this evening, too. Big thanks.
John, do we have any comments? No. Any questions, concerns from the visitors?
I have one question, a clarifying question for procedure.
Yes.
Can I ask, two consecutive meetings now we've had an abstention.
Yes.
So tonight, it was verbalized, and I believe written, there was a potential ethics violation of interest here.
Yeah, I've always-
Well, conflict of interest, but that's a potential ethics violation, right? So, which was proper. If there is a potential ethics violation, are you required to verbalize and write it?
Your policy governs that.
Yes, and I think that we should all keep that in mind as we move forward. If the abstention is for a conflict of interest, although not required, I believe a board member should do so, and that is to verbalize to the community why they're abstaining.
Absolutely.
Because I don't know if we're following that, or we should move forward.
For the record, item F, which was in regards to Willow contract, Director Bickerton abstained because The Willows is a client of his company's, so as a possible conflict, he decided.
Which was proper.
Yeah, I've always done that. I think I'm involved in a decision that's best, like with Mark Turney, same thing with Mark, I stayed for that one, too, so.
And you verbalized that, I think I remember, earlier. But last month, we had one that wasn't verbalized.
And it has to be, right?
Yes.
They have to verbalize why you're abstaining.
It's a potential ethics violation.
That last abstention was mine.
Yeah, and that was just, you didn't feel that you-
I was not.
That's what it was. He didn't feel he was up to speed to do it.
Okay. But moving forward, can we observe that?
Yes. John makes him feel like fun.
Yeah, but I would like the public to be aware of why the abstention's taking place, because we don't want to get into the habit of abstaining from everything we don't feel comfortable voting for.
Right. If the policy-
Which could paralyze the board, by the way.
If the policy isn't clear on that, then perhaps the board should go back, if people are in agreement, then we should go back to the 0-100 policy that governs that and make sure that it's written in.
To the zeros.
I think they're going the wrong way.
The laws that govern that.
And this may be something that-
Regardless of policy.
This may be something that we want to look at.
True, but our policy should be in line.
If it's not, that was money not well-stated.
This is something that we can look at, for example, in the case of a new director being elected, right? So obviously, in that case, having to vote on something, you know, in month one, we might, that might be considered a reasonable level, but, you know, a year and a half in, just to say you're not up to speed at that point would be unreasonable. Maybe it's something that we can-
No, I think that it's very reasonable that, that he did that.
Right.
And admirable, because he wasn't aware. I'm just encouraging our solicitor and our board secretary to be aware-
Yep.
And to make sure that meetings are running in accordance to the law rules.
And parliamentary procedures. Luke is not a quality. For, for the record, if, if you made that point last time, I would have had no problem verbalizing my, my rationale. I didn't know it was something-
My point is not to outline, outline specifically, but for our representatives, as the secretary and solicitor, to make sure that they're running an appropriate meeting.
From my understanding, and I could be wrong, so correct me, from my understanding, these meetings are for the board members, and we do have our solicitor here, but if we ask her a question, then she's supposed to answer us, but she's not supposed to jump into our meeting to clarify. Is that right, or am I wrong?
When there's an abstention, it should be verbalized, and that's in your policy.
I'm talking about anything.
Well, I mean, yeah, the board secretary would have a handle on that, for sure.
Yeah, right, that's right.
Unless you feel like whatever it is we're doing is, we're jeopardizing our own.
I'll tell you.
You'll tell us.
I'll tell you.
And that's-
And that board policy, we can review at some point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, moving down the road, we're consistent in doing the way we should be doing it.
Anything else? Excellent. Item 9, next scheduled meeting dates, February 10th, 2020, the work session right here, February 17th, 2020, the voting session right here. Do I have a move to adjourn?
Second.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned?